Ladies and gentlemen, if we could settle down. Counselors.
Shaughnessy. Starr.
Here.
Stein Hilber.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. In accordance with MGL Chapter 30A, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, to please make your presence known. And as you all know, it is being recorded by our Channel 18. Thank you. If you could join us now in a pledge of allegiance and then followed by a moment of silence.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the town council meeting of March 5th, 2020. I would ask that we keep in mind that we are one world, as we all struggle with coronavirus, which is affecting many of our countries, and especially here. Now we're seeing it in the United States, that we keep them in our thoughts and in And we would delay just a few moments because many of our counselors have been to one our hearts. meeting after another this evening. Thank you. We wanted to give them another minute, so thank you for your patience. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, a roll call, please.
Counselors, Beedenbender here.
Counselors, I would ask, for the sake of some of our audience watching on Channel 18
Bogan.
Present.
Clark.
Here.
Cullum.
Here.
Dagwan.
Here.
Rapkarsetti.
Present.
Hebert.
this evening, we have a very special item number that would normally come at the end
Present.
Leveck.
Present.
Neary.
Here.
Schnep.
of the evening on old, under New Business. And so I would ask Counselor Eric Stein Hilbert to read into the record, item number 2020-137, with your permission. Any objections? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is New Business, item 2020-135. Resolve to proclaim March 12th, 2020, as Girl Scout Day in the Town of Barnstable as written. Mr. President, I'll give some rationale on this.
I appreciate that, Counsel. Thank you.
So about a month ago now, I guess, we had a group of Girl Scouts in from a local troop. We had about a dozen girls here. I want to thank Town Manager Mark Els, Lynn Poignant, and David Anthony for helping out with that event. They've been working on their finding common ground and inside government badge, so we had the idea to have them come in here. And they actually sat up in our seats here. They definitely enjoyed the microphones. That was probably the highlight of the afternoon. But David Anthony gave a nice, brief history of the Town of Barnstable. And then I talked a little bit about how you'd run for town council, how town council functions. We talked about precincts and the different maps in town. Town Manager Els talked about his role and his administration of the different department heads. And then I actually came up towards the end of the event, and we walked them through an item. This was an idea that Lynn had, to walk them through an item where they'd read it in, they'd second it, they'd discuss it. My daughter actually ended up being, sitting in the president's chair, so she served over the meeting. She knew which chair to go to right away, so. So we talked to them about how the president recognizes someone to speak, and then we have, you know, civil debate and discussion on an item. So this was the item that they read in. It was a proclamation that if they passed it, that I would sponsor it as a town council and bring it forward for the full council to vote on. So I'll just, I'll read this proclamation, and we do have a nice copy in the office that's suitable for framing, but I will read the proclamation here into the record. So, "Resolve to proclaim March 12th, 2020, as Girl Scout Day in the Town of Barnstable. Whereas, Girl Scouts of America was founded by Juliette Gordon Low and held the first official Girl Scout meeting on March 12th, 1912. It was organized after her friend Robert Baden Powell founded Boy Scouts in 1911. Whereas, Girl Scout membership is organized according to grade, with activities designed for each level. Girl Scouts USA is a member of the World Association of Girl Guides and Girl Scouts and accepts girls of all backgrounds. Whereas, a 1994 Chronicle of Philanthropy poll showed Girl Scouts ranked by the public as the eighth most popular charity/nonprofit in America, among more than 100 charities. It describes itself as the world's preeminent organization dedicated solely to girls. Whereas, Girl Scouts unleashes the G.I.R.L., go-getter, innovator, risk-taker leader in every girl, preparing her for a lifetime of leadership. Whereas, Girl Scouts is proven to help girls thrive in five key ways as they develop a strong sense of self, seek challenges and learn from setbacks, display positive values, form and maintain healthy relationships, and identify and solve problems in the community. Whereas, through the Girl Scout leadership experience, a collection of engaging, challenging, and fun activities like earning badges, going on awesome trips, selling cookies, exploring science, getting outdoors, and doing community service projects. Whereas, along the way, Girl Scouts gain important skills in areas that form the foundation of the Girl Scout leadership experience: science, technology, engineering, and math, otherwise known as STEM, outdoors, life skills, entrepreneurship, and service. Whereas, Girl Scout Troop 80095, which is the troop that we had in here, is part of Barnstable Unit 311, and has been an active part of the Town of Barnstable community by performing a wide variety of projects and services to its residents, including presenting the Barnstable Police Department's Community Impact Unit with special care packages for the homeless. Girl Scout Troop 80095 was presented with the Town Council's Hometown Hero Award in March of 2019. Now therefore, be it resolved and in recognition of and to celebrate all that the Barnstable Girl Scouts and their volunteers have contributed to our town and its citizens, that on the occasion of the 107th anniversary of Girl Scouts of America, the Barnstable Town Council hereby proclaims March 12th, 2020, as Girl Scout Day in the Town of Barnstable." Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. We just have a little correction, a script is error. I believe it was read in as item number 2020-135, but it is actually item number 2020-137. We just picked up the script as error, so I would ask that we, any discussion on this item? No? Okay. So, all in favor of item number 2020-137, resolve to proclaim March 12th, 2020, as Girl Scout Day in the Town of Barnstable, signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you. Any objections? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. And thank you, Counselor, for working on that with the team. That was awesome and a great thing. Thank you so much. All right. All right. Now we're going to go into public comment. Again, we're going to invite you to come on up. If, again, if you feel like you're going to be repeating something that somebody's going to say right now, you know, feel free, if you want to stand next to that person or raise your hand, rather than just a complete repeat of somebody, but you all have a right individually to come up and speak, so please come forward if you'd like public comment. Thank you.
Good evening, Counselors. Excuse me. My name's Peter Cross. I'm a Hyannis resident, and I'm also the chairman of the Board of Fire Commissioners of the Hyannis Fire District. Coming before you tonight, you have under Old Business, 2020-135, the Baxter House at Levin High School Road, looking for a TIF. And I want you to know that the Hyannis Fire District wants no part of a TIF, because we can't afford it. When you give a tax incentive to somebody in the Town of Barnstable, you have a great base to spread your tax relief on. When we are subject to a TIF in the Village of Hyannis, our nine square miles, we don't have a big tax base. With all the tax-exempt properties that we have, and I've done that before, I've gone through all the schools and churches and everything else, we have nine pages of tax-exempt properties here in the Village of Hyannis. So, I had talked to a former town council, Ruth Wile, about asking for a seat at the table when TIFs were, when TIFs were being considered, and I thought that we had established that protocol, and evidently I was wrong, because I got a call a couple of days ago from a friend of mine that said, "Do you realize there's a TIF on the agenda for Thursday night?" And I was quite surprised, because we can't afford, in the Village of Hyannis, in the Hyannis Fire District, we can't afford to give anything away, period. Amen. And I would like to respectfully request that in the future, that the Hyannis Fire District has a seat at the table, because we are a political entity, recognized by the state, authorized by the state, and we are a taxing entity. And we cannot afford, as I say it again and again and again till it sinks in, we can't afford to give away any money from the Hyannis Fire District. So, when you're considering that tonight, please consider that we face a double whammy. When you have a TIF and you reduce the taxes at the town level, that's fine, you spread it throughout the town, and then again, it gets, the tax value gets reduced in the Village of Hyannis, and we lose money twice. Not once, but twice. Now, I don't know how many TIFs, or tax incentive, whatever it stands for, have been given in the other villages of the town, but I doubt it's very few. I don't know that, I don't know that for a fact, but I would be willing to bet it's very few. So I'm asking you to direct your town employees to give us a voice, give us a seat at the table, don't shake your head no, listen. We need your help. The Village of Hyannis needs your help. We're nine square miles, we're the poorest of all the villages in the town, we provide the most services of all the villages in the town. Last year, the Hyannis Fire Department answered over 7,436 calls for emergency services. Now granted, one of them was a cat stuck in the wall, but that's, the rest of them were legitimate, and we will gladly continue these services, but we need your help. So please consider giving us a seat at the table. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Frances Parks Katuit. At the last town council meeting, a group proposed the town, in order to save the environment, should ban water bottles. My problem with this proposed ban is that it is a totalitarian solution. Don't like it? Ban it. No suggestion to have a deposit on water bottles instituted, which was very successful to stop cans and soda bottles off the highways and recycle them. No public service messages urging people to dispose of water bottles responsibly. I see numerous nip bottles on the sides of the road, very few water bottles. No concern to ban them. There was no apparent concern by the opponents of a ban about the effect on the tourist business or the economic effect on merchants that sell water bottles, except an offhand remark that they will adapt. Are the tourists going to be informed that they need to bring their own bottles to fill up with water at water stations if they come to Barnstable? Will they be provided a map to the water filling stations? There is no doubt in my mind that the taxpayers will not only pay to install the water stations, but the water stations will be free to encourage tourists to bring their own water bottles. Plastic water bottles containing juice, soda, sports drinks, or tea are made from the same polyethylene tetra-ethylate as plastic water bottles. Why just ban water bottles? As a pediatric physician assistant, I am happy to see children and young adults with their water bottles. There is an epidemic of pediatric obesity in this country. If they do not have a bottle of water, they will be drinking soda, juice, or Gatorade, all of which are loaded with sugar and promote obesity. I have found, I have not found any documentation of medical conditions resulting from drinking water from plastic bottles after doing a literature search in the National Library of Medicine. There are numerous health reasons that some people need to have a bottle of water for hydration. Is anyone taking into consideration that West Barnstable's residents are dependent on wells because there is no public water supply, when they lose electricity in a storm or for any reason, they do not have water? We live in a free society. If someone wants to go into a store or use a machine to buy a water bottle, they should be able. Public health is far more at risk, in my opinion, with used hypodermic needles all over the town. We have public needle disposal boxes. We could have public trash cans for water bottle recycling. Finally, what will be the next consumer product that a group of people decide we need to ban? I would suggest that there is a minority of residents in the Town of Barnstable or other towns on the Cape who are aware that there is a group of people urging all towns to ban water bottles. If a ban is considered, it should be put to a vote for the residents of the Town of Barnstable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Francis Parks Katuit. At the last town council meeting, a group proposed the town, in order to save the environment, should ban water bottles. My problem with this proposed ban is that it is a totalitarian solution. Don't like it? Ban it. No suggestion to have a deposit on water bottles instituted, which was very successful to stop cans and soda bottles off the highways and recycle them. No public service messages urging people to dispose of water bottles responsibly. I see numerous nip bottles on the sides of the road, very few water bottles. No concern to ban them. There was no apparent concern by the opponents of a ban about the effect on the tourist business or the economic effect on merchants that sell water bottles, except an offhand remark that they will adapt. Are the tourists going to be informed that they need to bring their own bottles to fill up with water at water stations if they come to Barnstable? Will they be provided a map to the water filling stations? There is no doubt in my mind that the taxpayers will not only pay to install the water stations, but the water stations will be free to encourage tourists to bring their own water bottles. Plastic water bottles containing juice, soda, sports drinks, or tea are made from the same polyethylene tetra-ethylate as plastic water bottles. Why just ban water bottles? As a pediatric physician assistant, I am happy to see children and young adults with their water bottles. There is an epidemic of pediatric obesity in this country. If they do not have a bottle of water, they will be drinking soda, juice, or Gatorade, all of which are loaded with sugar and promote obesity. I have found, I have not found any documentation of medical conditions resulting from drinking water from plastic bottles after doing a literature search in the National Library of Medicine. There are numerous health reasons that some people need to have a bottle of water for hydration. Is anyone taking into consideration that West Barnstable's residents are dependent on wells because there is no public water supply, when they lose electricity in a storm or for any reason, they do not have water? We live in a free society. If someone wants to go into a store or use a machine to buy a water bottle, they should be able. Public health is far more at risk, in my opinion, with used hypodermic needles all over the town. We have public needle disposal boxes. We could have public trash cans for water bottle recycling. Finally, what will be the next consumer product that a group of people decide we need to ban? I would suggest that there is a minority of residents in the Town of Barnstable or other towns on the Cape who are aware that there is a group of people urging all towns to ban water bottles. If a ban is considered, it should be put to a vote for the residents of the Town of Barnstable. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. For some of you on the previous meeting, you're probably going to be hearing this twice, but it was important, at the last town council meeting, we had this issue, and I wasn't able to speak at that meeting, so I thought it was important to get this to the whole council and the public.
I'm sorry, you want to just state your name?
Oh, Laura Cronin. I wrote it down. I didn't even say it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
At the last February 20th civic council meeting, civic associations came and presented, provided some input for consideration into the town's short-term rental regulations. These were proposed based on information we heard back from our memberships. The feedback was heard, including pros and cons, but three themes were clear: protect the traditional Cape Cod rentals, protect our residential-only neighborhoods from corporate-owned short-term rentals, and if existing ordinances were enforced, a lot of today's issues could have been resolved. I re-watched the meeting, I heard all of the speakers speak, and the council's feedback, and it was apparent to me that I think our intent was not made clear. The civic association's intent has always been to protect the residents who have been renting their homes or rooms to offset their costs for generations, some for generations. We are not here to stop or prevent Ms. Farrell or Ms. Somers from renting their family homes or others from investing in properties in villages that they grew up in and in renting them out to renters who support our local businesses. It is evident that they all have respect for their properties and are good owners and neighbors we want to encourage. Initial discussions with our membership look to protect the residential-only neighborhoods from further encroachment of corporate-owned houses for one- or two-night renters from corporate owners, who, their own admissions, did not know who their renters would be, nor did they check on the tenants when they rented them to. They stated, as long as they were just registered to the town as a rental agent, they have no intention of using the property as a residence. During the zoning and regulatory meetings in January, we were told by staff and town attorney that anyone who was already registered as a rental property, regardless of where they were located, would have to be grandfathered in, and we could not be reversed with whatever regulations we may have come up with, that they were locked in. The assistant town manager, Mr. Clyburn, stated that the Mass Department of Revenue provided us with a list of the 601 existing short-term rentals that they collected tax from the Town of Barnstable in 2019, and noted that there probably could be double that, but we just don't know, and many of them already located in residential zones. We took that to mean that residents would be protected and would be able to keep their existing rental homes, so we looked at, to see how we could find a way from allowing further encroachment from corporations buying up more housing stock for one- or two-night stands or unmonitored rentals. Our intent is, in requesting a limit on the STRs and residential onlys, unless they were owner-occupied, was to protect the residents of the traditional Cape Cod rental and further data, until further data and information was available. By the town's proposing unlimited, excuse me, unlimited licenses in all zones with potential one-night stays, our collective membership felt that was detrimental to the neighborhood character. The Airbnb and the Cape Cod Realtors Association all agree that less than three nights is considered a high-risk rental, and wouldn't recommend not having a minimal stay requisitions, and those would be best handled by the hotels and motels. With regard to the ordinances and regulations, in general, we don't have a problem with them. However, our membership is concerned with the lack of enforcement, as we all have talked about, and felt more would be not effective without tracking them or having the enforcement to do so.
Laura, can you kind of end it? Thank you.
Yes. Our intent for requesting the workshop was to provide a forum to have a dialogue back and forth, sharing ideas, asking questions, and getting to know and understand each other a little better and find common ground. Having a public comment is a three-minute, one-way conversation. It's not allowance for conversation, it's not matter of clarification and content. So I would ask that if we could consider this dialogue going on and include them in the workshop, it's a lot different than public comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bob Schulte from Centerville. I apologize to the members of the zoning subcommittee who heard the statement before, but wanted to read this into the record. In the interest of the comments that have been made by the zoning subcommittee members, as well as members of the town council, that to get the short-term regulations right, I wanted to let all the council members know that a group is currently, right now, a work is underway by a consortium of citizens to hold a public workshop that will enable a real dialogue between the various interested parties on the best way to address the short-term rental issues. Our hope is to work together, using the best practices of what other communities similar to Barnstable have done, to find a way to both, one, preserve the Cape rental traditions, and, two, successfully address the short-term rental issue by establishing reasonable zoning and regulations for short-term rentals. We will be back in touch with the council members as soon as possible, with a venue and format for the workshop, and to identify a date that accommodates the schedules of as many town councils as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Could you just say your name for the public?
Oh, I'm sorry, Jeremiah Hegarty.
Thank you.
I, looking through the proposal, I know you guys have worked very hard on this, and one thing I think, in my little bit of research, to keep in mind for people who think that it's not thorough enough, from what I've seen, it's the strictest regulations for towns on the Cape, which I'm not entirely sure if that's factual, but from what I've looked up, it seems to be. And I'm not opposed to them, I think, I think there is a need for them, but it's important to just keep that in mind. This just came up to me while I was sitting there in the subcommittee meeting. Unfortunately, I won't be able to stick around until 11:00 PM with you guys tonight, like last week, I have to go, I have a work call, but. One thing that popped up in the subcommittee meeting was the idea of the caps, and, you know, just the colony that was brought up, you know, say there are five units in the colony, and you grandfather the owner in. Just to throw out a number, let's say the entire colony's worth $500,000. You know, if they sold it last year, they could have got that much. If, with new restrictions, he may not be able to sell that colony for half of that, you know, because of the cap on limits to future owners. So I think grandfathering in may, you know, temporarily do the job, but it could have unforeseen negative impacts. I think Counselor Beedenbender mentioned in one of the meetings, if a developer is doing a project, I think developers are important to the community because they provide a whole array of jobs from start to finish. If you take away the flexibility, whether it's a couple of units, they may be doing a big project, I think projects may become less desirable, or they may be less optimistic about them, just from that perspective. So I just, you know, you'd hate to see a developer that does a lot of stuff in Barnstable move to a project to Dennis because they don't have these same caps, and it may or may not work. So I don't know if, from the, I hadn't even really thought of this issue, but from the little bit we heard, it doesn't sound like we're dealing with one owner owning too many properties and causing lots of trouble, so I'm just not sure if there's the problem there to address at the time. But, you know, I think it's obviously a good point for discussion. So I think that's all I have to say, so thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Jeremiah. Anyone else, please? Okay, seeing no one else, we're going to close public comment, and I'm going to ask Counselors for response to public comment, please. Counselor Beedenbender, please.
I want to just say something about the plastic bottle ban, the proposed potential plastic bottle ban, that there are a lot of alternatives to plastic. First of all, there have been a lot of studies showing that there are very high amounts of microplastics in water. Yes, there are a lot of studies that have shown that. I don't have them on me right now, but I'm more than happy to point you in the direction. But that's not the point. The point is about the environment, and it's about the degradation of the environment. And just to your concern about people having access to water, if we did anything like this, there, you can get your water in tin cans in aluminum, just like you can with other drinks, they have cardboard containers, and there's also refilling stations. So it's not, it's not banning the water or making water inaccessible to people, it's just conveying it in a different container, because we have an enormous plastic problem on this planet, period, and it's degrading our environment, it's degrading our marine environment, and we have to do something. We cannot just keep doing things the way we always have. We have to start changing our behavior, and this is one small step in that direction. Plus, in addition, we also have insurmountable problems with our recycling issues right now across the globe, and plastics are a big contributor to that. So I understand your concerns, but there are solutions to those concerns that you have about accessibility to water, and we just need to be doing this for our environment at this point.
Thank you. Counselor Clark, please.
Thank you, Counselor President Hebert. Following up on Counselor Beedenbender's remark on the water bottles, I am from West Barnstable, and yes, we do feel some stress when there is a, when there is a power outage, but I believe that this proposed ban does allow for emergency, what do I want to say? Provisions for waters, for single-use water bottles at that time, so I think that has already been visited. And regarding a comment to Mr. Cross, thank you for your service to the Hyannis Fire District. I hear your concerns about providing services where you can't recoup the costs, but I believe the other fire districts also feel that pressure. I know in West Barnstable, I hear from the West Barnstable Fire Chief Maruka, often that he provide, or his team, provide services to the community colleges, to the community college, and to the housing units we have in West Barnstable, and they don't receive,
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I also just wanted to comment on the fire districts for, you know, the public certification. The fire districts are complete separate entities from the town. They have their own Enabling Act, they have their own taxation powers, they have their own elections, they have their own assets. So it would be wholly inappropriate for them to weigh in on the town's taxation policies in regards to TIFs. TIFs work in a way for the town to encourage creation of housing, encourage new growth, job development, economic development, and it is not a tax cut. A TIF provides a developer, whether it's housing or commercial, they may come into town and it's a vacant lot, or maybe it's an existing building or warehouse, they're already paying taxes on it. Say they want to put an addition on it, or maybe they want to remodel it, they want to expand. The tax break is on the value of that addition, or that expansion, it is not cutting their existing taxes. So again, I just want the public to realize, fire departments are completely separate from the town, and it would be wholly inappropriate for them to have say in any type of taxation policy with the town.
Councilor Dagwan, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Cross, for at least coming to this meeting and to bring forth the concerns that the fire district has. As a ratepayer in Hyannis, I feel the pain of this, and I'm sure there are others out there as well. As you said, you know, we have nine square miles here in Hyannis, and we have so many tax-exempt properties that it's really a real burden on those of us who are taxpayers. However, I, this is a project that I do support, we are in desperate need of housing, and I think this incentive is an important one, but I think as a town councilor, and to my other town councilors and others in the town, that we understand the burden that such, certain tax-exempt properties place on those of us who live in the, live in the Hyannis area. So I just wanted to share that with the council tonight. Thank you.
Mark?
I apologize for inserting myself, Mark Els, town manager. TIFs don't apply to fire districts.
Okay.
So, and that's been communicated in the past, so I don't know that it's been directly shared with Mr. Cross, but this is, this is an effort that, as, as Councilor Steinhebel explained, we are completely separate, they are a separate taxing authority, any relief is on the municipal general tax. Director Milne's here if you want to get into more detail, but, so it doesn't apply to any of the districts.
Thank you for that clarification, because that was my understanding, that fire districts were totally on their own to tax, so that's good. Thank you. Vice President Raffa Grissette, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, everyone, for their public comment. Just for clarification on the plastic bottle, proposed plastic bottle ban, that's being proposed or being promoted to be banned, just in the municipality, not townwide, but just within the town departments, not townwide. But I, something that Ms. Parks did say resonates with me. I, myself, who is outside a lot on the streets, I very rarely see water bottles on the side of the street. What I do see are the nip bottles. I'd much prefer to see a ban on plastic nip bottles in the Town of Barnstable. So I'd rather see the efforts being pushed for that than plastic water bottles, just saying. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You can't see the water bottles because of all the nip bottles. So the, the value, the value to the effort to, at least from the municipal point of view, to ban them, is that it's gotten the attention of the distributors, and one of the problems is, is that we don't dispose of water bottles correctly, any more than we dispose of nips correctly. So I am working on the state level to work on a program to recycle them properly, and to help people to put them where they belong, and we'll see what happens with that, but I'm, just today, got another phone call from one of the associations of the distributors who said, "We want to talk," and the reason they want to talk is because we're talking about banning them. So I think that effort makes another thing move forward. They weren't talking to us until we started talking about banning them, and we're talking about banning nips, too, so, okay, so, thank you. Thanks for your good work. All right, any other councilors' comments to public comment? Councilor Bogan, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to comment in response to Mr. Hagerty's comments, as well as Ms. Cronin's comments. I should also point out that I did sit through the subcommittee on short-term rental meeting before today, so some of my comments go to what I heard there. Let me say, first of all, I have no issue with traditional Cape rentals, and as I'll come to at the end, I think one of the problems is, we're speaking, as I said last week, with too broad a brush. We seem to talk in terms of short-term rentals, and I'm not sure we're all talking about the same thing. I am troubled by some of the comments I heard from the staff's presentation last week. This proposal, as I recall in response to my questions, is not modeled after any other proposal, and there are many from which we can draw experience. There is also a suggestion that the existing ordinance neither permits nor prohibits short-term rentals. Suffice it to say, reasonable minds can disagree on that issue. There was also a statement last week during the presentation that there is a concern with lawsuits from those who have been engaged in this process for years, unimpeded. Let me say, this, this proposal eviscerates single-family zoned areas. No consideration was given to those lawsuits that might be brought by property owners who invested in homes thinking they were buying into a single-family zoned area. How do I know that? Because I asked, "Did you give any consideration or do any studies into the effect on property values of this proposal?" The answer was no. Did you give, did you undertake any evaluation of what the town looks like in five or 10 years? The answer was no. That's not urban planning, that's a scrum. I fail to understand how this proposal takes into consideration and gives credence to the comments and the votes of the Centerville Civic Association, the Hyannis Civic Association, the Osterville Civic Association, all of whom said they don't want investor-owned rentals, short-term rentals. This doesn't seem to speak to that issue, those concerns at all. Yet, some seem to think we know better than all those towns that have come before us and implemented regulations. Mr. Hagerty might be right, these might be the strictest regulations on the Cape, but to my knowledge, that's because most towns in the Cape don't have regulations. I don't agree that it's best to get something on the books subject to revision later. I don't even know that we're, as I said, speaking about the same thing. There are numerous iterations that we've heard about with respect to short-term rentals. They range from investor-owned short-term rentals to traditional short-term rentals that have been engaged in by homeowners for many years. To my mind, it is better to take a break, have the hard conversations, and get it right, break those categories down, rather than the throw everybody into the pool approach that's being suggested. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Councilor Beedenbender, please.
I would just like to respond a little bit to Councilor Bogan. You know, you, you said you sat in the other meeting, and one of the comments that I made was, one of the initial complaints, or the foundational complaint surrounding these short-term rentals, was regarding enforcement. And so that is what we're trying to deal with initially, because we don't have good enough data to start putting some hardcore regulations on things, because we don't know the, the impact. There's also, yes, there are other towns that have existing regulations, but those towns are different than ours, there are similarities, but there are also differences, like, do we know, for example, in those other towns, have they had a tradition of homeowners renting out their homes?
Point of order, Mr. President.
Oh, sorry.
Just in the interest of the council's time, are we debating short-term rentals tonight?
No, 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 we're not, so.
Sorry, apologies, we'll, we'll take this up another time.
Thank you.
No worries.
Thank you, councilors. Anybody else? Okay, I'm going to close, response to public comment. Thank you very much for everyone's participation.
Good evening, Mark Els, town manager. This is my report for the period of February 28th through March 5th. The president of the town council has requested that the town manager prepare a presentation for the town council to consider whether Barnstable wants to pursue a Green Communities designation, giving you the link to the state website. I've created an internal working group on the subject that consists of our building commissioner, school facilities director, DBW staff, and our director of property and risk management. I've asked David Anthony, the director of property and risk management, to provide an overview, basically to let you know, this, we have been looking at this issue for more than a decade. We've been a leader in the state of Massachusetts in innovative approaches to energy conservation, one of the first, actually, when we capped the landfill in 1998, we, you know, argued with the state that we should be able to put solar panels on it, but at the time, that wasn't allowable, and years later, they changed their regulations, and, you know, we, we have been very successful at our treatment facility, our solid waste facility, and other locations in trying to integrate these, these innovative opportunities. David has been a leader amongst other staff in the town on this issue, so David, if you could give an overview, I'd appreciate it, but I will be bringing back to you a presentation relative to this for your consideration on the designation.
Thank, thank you, Mark.
That's not what tonight is, so.
Good evening, councilors. My name is David Anthony, as the town manager mentioned, I'm the director of property and risk management. I, just to put this in context, I am also the Town of Barnstable's executive board representative to the Kiplai Compact, and have been so since 2006, when I took over for Audrey Lockdane, who was a former town councillor who sat up here as well. The effort with the Green Communities Act goes back to 2008, and there was a robust effort in 2008, some of which carries forward, but the town manager asked me to briefly touch upon what the Green Communities designation, what the Green Communities Act is, so I've prepared just some basic information. For those of you who are familiar with it, this will be old hat. For those of you who maybe have never seen this before, perhaps this is an opportunity to gain some perspective on this. So basically, in order to become a green community, you would need to satisfy five basic criteria that are going to establish certain things within the town. Once you get that designation, there are certain opportunities that a green community can pursue. The five areas are as-of-right zoning. This is where a municipality basically establishes a place where as-of-right zoning exists for particular kinds of energy-related facilities, renewables, research facilities, or manufacturing facilities. You establish a kind of expedited permitting that allows certain projects that are associated with renewable energy to be fast-tracked in less than a year. You are required to establish an energy baseline of all of the energy that the municipality uses, that would be the schools, that would be the airport, that would be the town, all about vehicles, and then you establish an ERP, which is an energy reduction plan, and the goal was to reduce your energy profile by 20% in five years. Part of that is a green vehicle plan whereby there are rules set up to encourage, strongly encourage, town departments where appropriate to purchase green vehicles. Certainly, since 2008, the technology has changed considerably, and green vehicles are very different than they were 12 years ago. And finally, you adopt a stretch code, which is a bylaw that comes onto the books that requires certain types of building to meet a particularly strict building code, that meet a higher level of energy efficiency or water use, so that they can be considered better for the environment. So in the history of the Green Community Act, the first, the first year that it rolled out, the first year that people were able to apply for this in 2010, 35 communities were designated. There are currently 240 designated green communities in Massachusetts, and since its inception, there have been over $44 million worth of leveraged energy projects through the Green Communities Act. I would like to make a note of the fact that even though the town did not get Green Communities designation, we were actually recognized by the state in 2008 with a leading by example award at the State House for all of the work that we actually had done. So there, there may be this thought that because you're not a green community, it doesn't mean that you can't do green stuff, you can't put into place and eventually become the leader, and I think the state recognized the Town of Barnstable in 2008 for that achievement. So the purpose of the Green Community Act was really to try to incentivize those communities that needed it, that needed that direction, to undertake some of these energy-related initiatives, to look at energy efficiency, to look at investing in buildings, then making them more energy-efficient, looking at green vehicles. The idea here is that the less you spend on fuel, the more money you have to spend on other things, but it's also better for the environment in general. And the thought here is because this was going to be interdisciplinary, you would have improved coordination between municipal staff and departments, and I think that that has been an excellent achievement that the town has achieved here, in that schools and town work together, we work with the airports. Over the course of time, between 2008 and 2010, we were actually able to bring all of the procurement for natural gas and electricity into one desk, so that we were able to take advantage of the leverage, being the largest town on the Cape, of being able to buy fuels in bulk, and get better contracts because of that. And there is a direct connection here, there are grants that you can apply for once you get that Green Communities designation. So the benefits of designation, you can get the grants, you reduce greenhouse gas emissions, promote energy-efficient building construction, I mean, these, these are all great ideas, great messages, many of which we are currently endorsing in this community. We can cut the municipal energy costs so that our budgets, we can control those, that's one of the, one of the key elements of the budget that we really have to anticipate and guess what the cost impact is going to be when you come down to utilities, and that can be as much as four to five million dollars a year out of our, our budget cycle that's spent on fuel and gasoline, diesel, electricity, natural gas. And also, what it means is, as a community, you become a leader, so that you hopefully encourage others to also adopt those same goals. So our current status, if we take a look back at 2008, the byright zoning is actually in place. It has been 12 years, we should probably revisit that as a matter of course, to make sure that that's still a good, a good idea after 12 years. The expedited permitting, as I understand, is also in place, again, wouldn't be a bad thing to review it since then, those two were relatively easy to do upfront at the time. Our baseline was commenced in 2008, and worked through Richard Elrich, who was our energy manager at the time on the municipal side. I had taken on the role of the energy manager for the school department in 2006 as well, and have managed their $2 million utility budget. Our baseline needs to be redone now, it's 12 years old, and the unfortunate problem is that the 20% energy reduction now is going to be off the modified base, which means all the good work that we've done doesn't really count towards the new energy reduction plan. So maybe this is one of those situations where being a little too aggressive may, may pose a challenge. We have a green vehicle policy that's in place. The green vehicle policy specifically encourages people to buy or lease vehicles for municipal use, but there are certain exemptions, emergency vehicles, heavy-duty construction, school buses, things along those lines. However, the technology has changed. In 2008, school buses were getting between five and six miles to the gallon, they're now up around 11 or 12. So using cleaner- So, using cleaner diesel, using better technology, you've already seen a doubling in the miles per gallon. And finally, the stretch code bylaw is currently part of that working group that the town manager had identified that is going to sit down and take a look at. You would think that it's a fairly easy thing, but there are differing opinions as to what the impact, direct and indirect, will be by adopting that code. And there is an alternate path that's available under the Green Communities Act. So, they recommend adoption of a particular state standard. But if you can, and it seems if you read the language of the law, if you can come up with something that meets the intent of the law, that's a different path. We may be able to come up with something that meets a lot of different goals and needs. So, in essence, that's our status as a Green Community designation, your infrastructure and energy committee that meets regularly. Council liaison, Councilor Starr is at those meetings. Peter Doyle, who is former long-term town employee at Water Pollution Control and certainly helped get the wind turbines and the solar and all of the energy efficiency there while he was division manager, is the chairman, I believe, or at least involved in that committee. He also acts as the alternate for the Town of Barnstable, the Cape Light Compact, so he is very much tied in. And the Cape Light Compact has been a tremendous partner. They're actually going to, through a grant that pays them directly from the state, once we apply for it, if we get it, they would do most of the work on the baseline, so it's not going to have an impact on staff. So, again, that partnership is going to pay dividends. So, that's our current status of Green Communities. Thank you. I guess I'm done. That's the music, right?
Councilors, questions to David?
Counselor... Thank you, David. I appreciate the presentation. I don't really have any questions. I want to thank the leadership for moving this forward. Finally, we have some leadership that will do that. I've been on the energy committee for over three years, and this is one of the main things we've been talking about forever. I mean, they, literally, we've been talking about it since 2000, they've been talking about it since 2008. Mashpee has been a green community since 2010. We've missed, if we were a green community, we're looking at $220,000 right off the bat to put into municipal, anything that will save energy going, and will save money into the future if we make things more efficient now. So, I think it's a program we need to move forward with. It needs to be done by October. There's a $10,000 grant from Cape Light Compact that will aggregate a lot of our energy use now. And we've, I mean, they're waiting for us to apply. I think that's about it. You know, Mashpee's been a green community since 2010. The stretch code is not much of a stretch, and we're not going to go off and rewrite our own. I can tell you that right now. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Starr. Counselor Beedenbender, please.
Thank you, President Hebert. I, too, am very excited that we're at least investigating this further and really trying to wrap our arms around it. I know that I've been yammering on about it for about, I don't know, 18 months now. I also just wanted to make a note that I was at the legislative breakfast last week, I guess it was, and Julian Seer was talking about the Green Works legislation that is under discussion right now. It's for coastal resiliency, CO2 reduction. There are funds available. It also deals with greenhouse gas emissions, microgrids, and also funds for an energy coordinator. So, just wanted to let you know about that.
Thank you. Counselor Steinheber, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, David, for the presentation. I appreciate it. This kind of reminds me of that Milo song, "Two Out of Three Ain't Bad." So, this is "Four Out of Five, That Ain't Bad." So, we have been a leader in this for years, as you mentioned. But the poison pill in this one is the fifth one. It's the stretch code. That's where you lose, you know, local control. That's where you have a big increase in cost of development, residential and commercial. And I'm always going to be banging the drum on this. We sit on a razor's edge of the cost of construction per square foot. And anything we do needs to be reducing that, not adding to. And grant money's nice. I appreciate that that's available. But when the impact is so negative that it just dwarfs that amount of grant money, that's something that I just hope that we take under strong consideration and discussion. I appreciate the town manager and his staff to, looking into that, and I know they'll come back to us with a reasonable recommendation. But we got to be thinking about new growth dollars. We got a billion-dollar sewer system we're working on to protect our environment, our drinking water. Anything we do cannot increase the cost of construction here on the Cape. We sit on a razor's edge. And we need $1 million in new growth every year just to maintain. And I'm always going to remind my fellow councilors about that, so... Thank you, David, for the presentation.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Bogan, please.
Just a comment. Thank you, Counselor Steinheber, because you actually asked, or commented on what was going to be my question, which is, what's the downside? Are there others to which we should be aware, other than, say, the stretch code and the implications on the cost of construction?
I think one of the downsides, if you want to call it that, with state grants, there are sometimes obligations that come with those state grants that have staff implications. Regular reporting, regular tracking to a level that you might not find locally is necessary, but the state will collect that information so that regionally or statewide, they can then discuss trends and reshape. The Green Communities Act has been modified at least once since 2008. When you start to take a look at many of the energy initiatives that the state has done, they have relied heavily on data that they collect through 2008 forward under the Green Communities Act. So, we don't quite know what the staff impact could be to some of those grants. And sometimes the grants that you get have a very expensive tail in staff time as far as regular tracking and reporting. I don't know, but that is a track record that sometimes comes up. It doesn't mean that the information you collect isn't a bad thing to have. But that's one area that I would be, I would want to look at, because sometimes that's buried in the state grants, the language on page 37 or whatever it is. Thank you.
Counselor Snapp, please.
Thank you, David, for your presentation. And again, I think that criterion five has been a sticking point for our town to move forward in the Green Communities Act, because we have been out of the gate, probably before almost every other town, maybe in the Commonwealth, on a lot of these issues. So, I think we can be proud for what we have done so far. I totally understand the need for our development, you know, not to stifle our development, but we may need to look at this through a different lens now that, I believe, by the end of this year, every town on the Cape is going to be a green community. The relative, most of our builders are going to be already probably using the stretch code in other communities. And so, I doubt there's a really huge marginal cost to do it down in Barnstable. So, just consideration as we evaluate the impact of that criteria. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you. Counselor Beedenbender, please.
Thank you. Mr. Anthony, so when you, when you, the working group has done all of its research and it reports out to the council with its recommendations, would you also, if you aren't already doing this, would you make sure that you include potential impact on staff, resource impact, and also, if there is a way, you know, per Counselor Steinheber's concern or with the concern that he brought up about that razor-thin edge and that $1 million of new growth dollars, you know, what the anticipated impact on that bottom line would be? Please.
Certainly.
David, may I ask you, any of the grants available that would offset the use of a stretch code? Is there grants that come to a community that would assist with the building of these buildings? Just a question.
I think the details are going to be in the grant documents that you get. And sometimes it's hard to guess what's going to be contained in the fine print. So very often, when we take a look at grants from the state, we have to really read through those and make sure, and that's in any area in the town. My understanding and reading of this is that these grants are meant to encourage and incentivize and help municipalities do energy-related projects. I haven't seen whether or not you could use it to do a gap between a $300,000 house and a $320,000 house and somehow use that $20,000 difference as an incentive and cover that. There are grants that are out there that are available for people to do that. I know that the Cape Light Compact, for example, has underwritten the solar that goes onto the Habitat for Humanity houses so that they become technically zero-energy houses, so that we as users of electricity here through the Cape Light Compact help to offset the cost, the incremental cost to put solar on those houses. They're sited appropriately so that the solar can be there. There are heat pumps that are used inside the house, and the solar runs those, so that, once again, you have this burden of utility bills for people who fall into a lower-income category. And that's how you can incentivize people to get into homes, the right-size homes, and make them work. So, there are programs that are out there. This is a program out of that, and that's where the infrastructure and energy committee really does have an opportunity to bring those programs forward and help staff find those and locate those.
Thank you.
I don't want to debate this. I don't know.
No, no, but Counselor Starr, please.
I was just going to say that for people, this program covers new residential buildings and commercial buildings over 100,000 square feet.
Actually, I think the language is residential 3,000 square feet. Anything over 3,000 square feet, residential and commercial and industrial buildings, according to the website.
Okay, so the increased costs, part of the increased costs for a building like that is you need to make it more airtight. You also need to hire a person who is going to track the energy system as it goes through. And there are rebates to pay that, for the owner, for the builder, to get that money back. And also, the person who's buying the building is going to have a utility costs that are extremely low and for the 40, 50 years of the house, the payback is about two or three years, if there's an increased cost. And we're only talking, how many houses are built in town a year? Fifty-five? Fifty-five residential houses last year? That's it. So, and we've got builders, I mean, we're surrounded by green community towns. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, if there's no other questions, I'm going to... Thank you, Mr. Anthony. Great presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And thank you, town manager, Mr. Els, for having us set up. Thank you.
I expect our first discussion with you to be about item five when we come in. That way, we can get clarification on that and hopefully move forward with some decisions. Attached is our most recent communication to local boards of health from the U.S. Center of Disease Control and Prevention dated March 4, 2020, issuing a revised guidance regarding travelers to Level 2 and 3 countries returning to the U.S. and recommended procedures for reducing the risk of transmission of viruses, a virus associated with the coronavirus. Also, if you go on our website, we'll be posting, you go on the homepage, scroll down left side, we'll be posting updates as they become available. Our emergency response officials, in coordination with all of our staff, schools, airport, general, county, state, and federal officials are in constant communication and will remain so until this event concludes. So, we've had a lot of rumors. We've had a lot of statements that there have been, you know, positive results relevant to individuals with some form of a flu. Fortunately, that has not been correct yet. We will continue to monitor this carefully and constantly and bring all resources to bear to communicate and coordinate, so we keep our public healthy and safe. Please wash your hands, okay? It's basic, but wash your hands and try to, if you get sick, try to, you know, not go into large groups. I'm not a doctor, but I think we have that posted in all of our bathrooms now. Just, you know, little things can make a difference. Yes, oh, sorry. Back to you, sir. Somebody had their hand up.
I was just going to say, wash your hands like you've just caught jalapenos and you need to put contacts in your eyes.
Okay. We are proceeding with the tasks in the budget action calendar for FY 2021 as scheduled. The FY 2021 capital budget and the 2021 to '25 capital improvement plan has been submitted to the town council and posted on the town's website. Town will conduct their first reading of the FY 2021 budget orders in this evening, on this evening, and a second reading beginning March 19. Mark Milner and I will do a brief summary of the FY 2021 capital improvement program when items are taken up under new business this evening. Town manager's 2021 rate hearing is scheduled on March 10 at 10:00 a.m. here at Town Hall in this room. I give you the link to those rates. They're in the area of, in the youth and, or under recreation, water pollution, water supply, solid waste. Attached is a summary of townwide water rates, as requested at the last town council meeting. So, you can take a look at those and see how they compare. There's a little statement in the end that really tries to bring it down to, okay, what's the average person use? And if you take the rate times that, what's their annual bill look like? But it gives you the breakdown. You'll see we're all a little bit different in the way we're structured, so it isn't apples-to-apples, though, so that's why staff felt, let's try to take it right down to what the average resident might pay, or what the average usage is, and therefore, what the resident would pay. Once again, the president of the town council has requested that the town manager prepare a draft ordinance for town council to consider a ban on municipal use of plastic bottles in the Town of Barnstable. Our senior staff has taken this under review, and I'll bring forward a draft ordinance in the near future for your consideration. At the request of the president, once again, we're planning for a panel discussion regarding 5G at the night auditorium. The tentative date is March 30, pending confirmation of the panelists. We're really trying to put a panel, an objective panel together on this, not just present one side of it. It has been suggested to us that we could have a lot of people show up to this, and therefore, we thought best not to come to this room, but go to the night auditorium. I believe it can be recorded there as well. I provided a link to the presentation to town council by attorney Alan Mandell on the municipal permitting limitations relevant to 5G that was done last March for the town council. There's the link. So, you may want to take a look at that. I also receive emails time to time, and I'm always, I always want to reach out to our residents, which I do, but typically, it's one email, and let them know when they send me articles about everything. But certainly, this was about 5G and being able to permit, and everything that they were claiming was a victory, you know, for those who want to look at this issue of 5G and for municipalities to be able to permit. The Town of Barnstable already does all of this. We already have all of this in place, and our residents don't know that. The challenge we have here is this is regulated by the federal government, and if it's allowed by the federal government, then, or an agency thereof, we should be looking as well, we should look locally, but we should be looking as well at changes that would need to occur to federal. And I believe there's actually some pending state changes at this point. So, we'll keep you advised, and this is, I mean, we have, I have weekly communications relevant to this technology. And as we move towards smart cars and other applications, we know this technology here is advancing momentarily. By the time I get home, something will have changed. They are looking to put these sorts of technologies, this fifth generation, into place. So, we are being approached, solicited, you know, communicated with constantly. So, this isn't going to go away. So, we really, as a community, need to know where do we want to be on it and then figure out the best tactics to be able to position ourselves that way. I want to thank the Barnstable Youth Commission and the supporting staff for the job fair conducted yesterday at the Youth and Community Center. There were 266 students who attended from 22 schools on and off the Cape. There were 266 students who attended from 22 schools on and off the Cape. This is the largest attendance to date. I want to thank the volunteers, the 39 businesses that participated, and specifically Warren Rutherford and his son Kevin from the executive suite joined us, and were joined by Mass Hire, and they were doing job coaching, so a little bit different function. Great event. Everybody gave positive feedback, and I can't say enough about the leadership of our Youth Commission. So, thank you. Great job. Finally, well, maybe I should pause here because I'm going to have Elizabeth Jenkins come up and do an update relevant to accessory dwelling units. There was a question at the last council meeting, and I thought it would be worth Elizabeth coming up and sharing with you what is on the books and what we might want to consider in the future. So if you have any questions of me, otherwise, I'll have Elizabeth come up and do that.
Counselors, anyone want to ask questions right now of Manager Ells before? Counselor Bogan, please.
Just with regard to Item 5 and the 5G presentation, for the record, Mark had reached out to me trying to identify non-biased participation on the wireless side, and I did get back to him after doing some checking. I said, "The problem is that anybody that I might identify is usually somebody who works on behalf of the wireless industry," or vice versa. Alan Mandell was a name that came up after I spoke with you on Friday. I've known Alan for many, many years. And he's a credible representative of the communications specter, so.
Okay, well, thank you. And thank you for your help on that, too. I appreciated it.
I really wasn't of much assistance.
Well, you were. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And, Mark, we have Counselor Snep.
Oh, yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank you for including, or at least it was part of what we received with your communication about the water purveyor rates. That's an excellent report. Thank you so much.
Yes, okay. You're welcome.
Elizabeth, you're on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Good evening, Councilors Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development. I'm also joined by our Housing Coordinator, Arden Cadran, in case you have any tough questions. Town Manager Ells asked me tonight to, again, give you an overview of our current regulations pertaining to accessory dwelling units, and then I'll talk a little bit about what has been done regionally. We currently have two programs under our zoning and general ordinances that allow for accessory dwelling units. The first is a provision of our zoning ordinance that allows for family apartments. Any property owner can, has the ability to create a family apartment. Occupancy of that unit is limited to family members or relatives. Property owners can reside in either the principal dwelling or in that accessory unit under the family apartment program. That was a change the council made perhaps two years ago to the program to allow that flexibility. In terms of the permitting process, you know, how difficult it would be for a typical homeowner to enter into the program, again, something that was looked at two years ago. Family apartments are permitted either by right or at times with the Zoning Board of Appeals special permit, again, if they, you know, if they begin to stretch the limits of what might be accessory in terms of size or occupancy, and also detached units as well. These are monitored through the Inspection Services Department, the Building Division, through filing of an annual affidavit from the property owner, again, attesting to the fact that the apartment is occupied by a family member or relative. So it's our first program, Family Apartment Program. The second of two programs that lawfully allows for an accessory dwelling unit to a single family is our Accessory Affordable Apartment Program. We put this program back in place in perhaps 2000, I think? Yes, Arden's saying yes. To participate in the Accessory Affordable Apartment Program, it has to be an owner's primary residence, and the rent, the unit, the secondary unit, accessory unit, has to be rented at an affordable rent to a qualified tenant, and that number is 80% of area median income under the Accessory Affordable Apartment Program. In this case, the owner has to live in the principal residence. There's not that flexibility that's provided under the Accessible Affordable Apartment Program, so owner-occupied, single-family dwelling. The eligibility under this program, it's limited to units that were created prior to the year 2000 but weren't lawfully permitted, so, or newly-created units. So in administering this program, there is a little bit of a gap. Again, we started this program in 2000. The idea was to bring all of those units that hadn't been properly permitted into compliance, but now we have a 20-year gap of units that, again, may have been, may not have been lawfully permitted. A new owner buys a structure, attempts to permit it lawfully, and there is a little bit of an issue with the program there. The permitting process, again, how easy is it for a typical homeowner to go through? I would say the bar is much higher on the Accessory Affordable Apartment Program. We permit these units through what's essentially a local mini 40B process. The process essentially requires inspections, of course, from the Building Division. They do a site assessment and sign off on what needs to happen under building codes to bring that unit up to compliance, a sign off from the Town Manager's office on a site eligibility letter, and then a public hearing by a hearing officer at the Zoning Board of Appeals. They also have to record a deed restriction on the property indicating that they will rent that unit to an affordable dwelling. And we do, in Planning and Development, we do monitor all those units, so annual monitoring that the tenants in those units are in fact eligible. The benefit of that process is the units do count on the subsidized housing inventory. So, you know, if the town were ever going to, again, to attempt to get close to the 10% of housing stock required to be affordable by DHCD and attempt to have a, be a safe haven from 40B, those accessory affordable apartments would count on our subsidized housing inventory. We do also administer a program, our Housing Coordinator administers a program funded by CPA, where if an eligible homeowner wants, a homeowner wants to apply to them for code upgrades, there's funding available through that. So those are the two programs that we have now, again, family apartment, accessory affordable apartment. Both of those, both of those programs obviously do have restrictions on who can occupy the dwelling, and because of this, you know, it is a limitation and a barrier to entry into the program. One of the recommendations in our housing production plan, the town's adopted housing production plan, is to consider both strengthening the accessory affordable apartment program and allowing market-rate accessory apartments to increase housing options. The permitting of accessory dwelling units as of right has been an attractive option to many communities who are looking to increase the supply and diversity of their housing stock because it builds on what we have, it builds on the housing stock that we have available today. So we're hearing about how, you know, how difficult it is to produce units, high construction costs. Accessory dwelling units are a way, again, that we can use our existing housing stock, use our existing infrastructure and provide options and potentially affordable options, both to homeowners and to those that they rent to. So there have been communities on Cape Cod that are, have permitted the creation of these market-rate accessory apartments. There have been seven to date Cape Cod communities who have adopted an accessory affordable apartment by law. They each sort of have their own local, I'm sorry, an accessory dwelling unit by law. Seven. I think Falmouth, actually, this requires a special permit, so I don't think it could be considered an as-of-right by law, but six as-of-right bylaws plus the seventh in Falmouth. So we're seeing this as a trend, again, to address our housing, our housing stock issues throughout Cape Cod. Happy to answer any questions should you have them.
Thank you very much. Counselor Beeden, Benner, please.
Regarding the ADUs, just curious, vis-à-vis STRs. Would we be putting some sort, would, we should include in the conversation, I should say, we should include in the conversation how STRs fit into this, you know? Do we ban STRs in ADUs or how that works? I just want that to be part of the conversation because it's such a hot topic, and we want to make sure we cover it.
I think we certainly, we certainly started down that road a little bit this evening. I think currently, both the family apartment program and the accessory affordable apartment program would not permit short-term rentals in those today.
Thank you. Vice President Rap Grissette, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Elizabeth, for clarifying what's on our books right now. As I stated at the last meeting, I think this, the town or the zoning and regulatory review committee should bring this up. There is on the Cape Cod Commission's website a draft bylaw, and it has very good response to the issues, and I encourage the counselors to look at this. You know, when I took part in the housing production plan workshops, one of the most resounding comments I heard from the seniors, and I'm a senior now, is that people want to age in place, and what we have on the books now does not allow the primary residence to be rented out. The senior has to live in the primary residence and just the ADU be rented out. So I encourage the council to bring this up, and let's look at this and look to adopting this by right so that we can create some more apartments or single-family homes for young families to live in. And granted, they're not the affordable, per se, but market rate, but at least it's providing some more opportunities and a little variation on housing units. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. May I just ask, what percent, I know that our goal is 10% of subsidized housing inventory. Where we stand right now?
I believe 7.2. I believe we're at 7.2%.
Thank you very much. Any other counselors? Counselor Snep, please.
And do you know how many units we currently have in the Accessory Affordable Apartment Program?
I believe, oh, 160?
A little less.
A little less than 160. Yeah, they, I mean, they continue to drop off, unfortunately. I think, again, because we, when we first put that program in place, we saw a lot of participation in it, again, because it offered that amnesty option for folks who, you know, may have always had that dwelling unit but wasn't lawfully permitted. Again, because of that gap in eligibility, I think we've seen a lot less, and I think just sort of an unintended consequence of the cumbersome process. We see very few applications now, I would say, maybe, yeah, maybe a half dozen a year? Yeah, less than that. Most of the work that we've been doing is honestly cleaning up the program and rescinding those deed restrictions that are out there so they don't create title issues for people. But, you know, even, you know, we've talked about sort of marketing the program and how to, again, ways to improve it, but I think what we found is the process is cumbersome, and folks, even if they're, even if they're well-intentioned, they see the sort of wall of paperwork and steps and hearing process to go through, and it's very intimidating.
Would you say that some of those units that have, that have kind of been reabsorbed could come back in as a by right? Or have they been materially changed, and so there's not a unit that's even out there anymore?
Yeah, so, I mean, a lot of the units out there, and this was one of the, one of the changes that was made a few years ago, was to allow the building commissioner more discretion if a unit isn't being used under one of these two programs, to give the homeowners some options for restoring it back to single-family. So while that may have been, in the past, again, you know, requirements for removal of kitchens or things like that, I think, Brian's here and he could speak to it, but my understanding is that there's a, there's a lot more flexibility built into those interpretations that allow people to use those as living space as part of their dwelling now, but may be able to open the door for that in the future.
Counselor Dagewen, please.
Yes. How are you handling issues of non-compliance? How do we, you know, really regulate, make sure that these units are safe? I know I got my tax property information this year, and it said that they're going to be coming out to everybody's home and looking at all of the properties that exist here in the town.
So we'll let Brian jump in if I get this wrong, but we do require, anytime we permit a unit, a site inspection. I'll let Brian speak to it as long as he's here.
So, code compliances, again, we're very much complaint-oriented. So if we get a complaint, we can, we can address those. We were asked to inspect houses in preparation for an affordable unit or an accessory apartment, and when we go out and we do find code violations, we work with the people and try to help them address them in a way that's easy and less impactful on them. And I'll give you an example. There's a lady over on Service Road, and she had a ceiling that was too small, it was too low to actually be an apartment. I brought her into my office, we sat down, I helped her fill out the appeal process application to the state, and then we guided her on how to get up to the state and make an appeal. And then we went there with her, and when the state asked the community what their recommendation was, we said we weren't opposed to the matter, and that helped her get her apartment, and it went off without a hitch. And we've done that several times since I've been here. And speaking about the, Barnstable used to be legendary for requiring people, it was just an interpretation issue, really, but for requiring people to tear kitchens out of their homes. So you spend $30,000 on a kitchen, and you have to tear it out when your daughter moves out of the house, or your grandmother moves out of the house, or whatever. So with management legal and Town Planner's Office, we were able to fix that, and it's much better and much more user-friendly now.
Thank you, sir. I was concerned if there were any, you know, fines or anything. Thank goodness you're working with the homeowners and trying to make them more compliant.
Counselor Dagewen, you'll hear a little bit more about that from us in, hopefully, another month or so. Our first step is always voluntary compliance, and it's voluntary compliance with a little bit of encouragement and help along the way. So, and I'm not talking about fines or things like that, I'm talking, I'm talking about friendly encouragement and trying to help our citizens not.
Yeah, great.
Put our thumb on them, you know?
Brian was addressing the code compliance, but then there's also the compliance with the terms of the program, so needs to be rented to a tenant on an annual basis at an income level. So that's the monitoring that I do, and if they don't respond, or if I don't hear from them, we contact them a number of times, we send out a registered letter, and then we hold a show cause hearing to determine whether that permit should be rescinded, because we can't just let them, you know, say they have an affordable apartment if they really don't.
Thank you, Elizabeth, for the presentation.
Okay, thank you very, very much. Thank you. Counselors, we actually have a short meeting relative, but the town clerk sits there, and I'm going to take a two-minute recess, which will go to three, but I expect everybody back no later than four minutes from now. Thank you very much. Counselors, come back, come back. Actually, it's not, we're up to six. Counselors, your feet will turn to pumpkins if you don't return. Thank you, councilors. If, we're going to, Vice President Rap Grissette, could you please act on the minutes for us?
Thank you, Mr. President. I make a motion that we accept the town council meeting minutes of February 27, 2020, as presented.
I have, a minute? Oh, sorry. Second.
We have a first, we have a second, and...
Couple of corrections. I had spoken to Janet about misspelling of Ann Rollins' name and Chuck Sadet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor of accepting the minutes of the February 27 meeting?
As corrected.
As corrected. All in favor?
Aye.
That's, that's unanimous. Thank you. Communications from elected officials, boards, committees, staff commission reports, correspondence, and announcements. Councilor Levett, please.
Thank you, President Hebert. First, I wanted to mention that, and for all those who are watching, on Channel 18, I went to the open house that they had on last Friday for the upgraded redesigned new studio, Channel 18 studio downstairs, and I have to say it was very impressive in the small space that they have. They've done some great work. It looked fantastic, new lighting, you know, redesigned vision, they're going to be able to do things that they weren't able to do before because of the new technology, and just revisioning. Not that anything was ever wrong with what was there before, but they just made it better. And many thanks to the team down there, Paula, Sarah, Chris, Stone. There will be a, it's kind of a five-tier plan that they have moving forward, with meeting coverage, of course, continued meeting coverage that's going on right now, and the other meetings that are televised there. And then there'll be a documentary unit that will take place, creating episodic documentary, documentary episodes of different things that are going on in the town. There'll be a public service announcement unit that will take place, current events unit, and then a studio unit, which is what was before with interviews in-depth, you know, things going on departmentally that initiates more conversation. And so, very excited about the new things that are going to be able to happen there. And if you haven't got a chance to go check it out, anybody, you know, feel free to talk with Paula and Sarah and the team, and I'm sure they'll be happy to show you around. The other thing I wanted to mention is normally, I would mention it the meeting prior, but the meeting, the next meeting, the event is happening the next day, and that's the Barnstable Youth Summit on March 20. And if, I just wanted to mention on the councilors, I believe we're all invited, we're all welcome to go. A number of the councilors were able to attend last year, and again, it's an all-day event. We take the, a five-star bus company has donated buses to take the seventh graders from the Barnstable Intermediate School and bring them to Four C's for the all-day conference that's, again, run by the Barnstable Youth Summit. Cliff Crosby, former NFL player, who's got a very interesting story, and he will be the primary guest speaker, and he'll be talking about making choices. And then, of course, we have our local Gosnold speaker extraordinaire, if you've ever heard him speak before, he's incredible, Kevin Rosario, he'll be there, talking with the kids, inspiring the kids to make good choices. Actually, he's just a great guy, and I'm happy to actually call him my friend over the, the time I've got to know him through the process. Robert Hackinson, Jr., who's a magician from Dynamic Influence, will be there again this year. And just a special thanks to Representative Will Crocker. He actually had money earmarked on the state level, grant of $25,000 to pay for the event. And it's just a great event if you're able to attend. I know it's a full day, and, but it is a great opportunity, really, to bring these seventh graders in. And, you know, the whole premise of it is drug prevention. And, and they also deal with different issues on bullying, but, I mean, it's really about awareness and trying to, again, get these kids trained to make good choices, not just telling them, "Don't do it," but telling them how to do it, how to make good choices, how to say no. It's not just, and, and the benefits thereof. So it's, it's pretty in-depth, that's why it takes all day to do it, and the investment. Special thanks to Patty Machado, Lieutenant Jeanie Chalice, there's just so many people involved with that, our very own Lynn Poyant, Councilor Jennifer Cullum, who's behind really starting this whole thing, so I can't say enough about it. And if you're able to attend, it's a very rewarding day. And full disclosure, my son Connor is the vice chair of the, of the Barnstable Youth Commission, and kind of sad to say, it's going to be his last year, and he's been there since he was a freshman in high school. And my son Cameron will be a seventh grader there as well, so really happy to be able to share that time with him. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Councilor Beedenbender, please.
Thank you. Just a very quick thing. I attended the Cape Women's Coalition International Women's Day Breakfast, I think it was yesterday, wasn't it? It was yesterday. And it was, the theme was the importance of the vote, but also, we also talked about the census. So just a reminder to all of our viewers out there how critically important it is to funding that we have our census all filled out by all of our residents. So please, when the census is, you know, in your mailbox, make sure you fill that out. And if you didn't get one, please contact, who should we contact? Okay. Contact Lynn Poyant with the town to get your census. Thanks.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Starr, please.
In terms of voting, I would like to thank Janet Murphy and Ann Quirk for, the voting day went very well, as far as I could, I mean, there were, it went very well. Actually, I talked to Ann this afternoon, she was still counting votes. And there was, there was a little problem where the Secretary of State put out a bulletin that said you could bring your own pen, and there would be all sorts of sanitary wipes and all sorts, I mean, it was, and the first people, I got complaints because the people got there and they couldn't use their pen, but the machines are all brand-new, and, and even the people who, who provided us with the machines weren't sure, but if you stick all these different pens in, is it going to muck up the machine by the end of, the end of the day? So it was a little miscommunication, but thank you. Did a good job. Good luck in September, in November.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Snapp, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to share that I had a opportunity to join our Conservation Commission members at the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissions. It's amazing how many associations there are out there, but every year they hold a all-day conference, and it was especially rewarding because one of our commissioners, Dennis Hool, and he is... This gentleman on, on the left, or on the right. And, okay, and he was awarded by the entire association the Conservation Commissioner of the Year, and he is standing next to the Secretary of Environmental Affairs, and there were other folks that received awards. But I just wanted to point out, this commission, I know we have all sorts of volunteer committees and commissions, but I can't say enough about the work and the commitment that these folks put into, you know, into our community. Mr. Hool was appointed to the Conservation Commission in 2005. He served as chair for eight years, vice chair for two, and now he's been clerk since 2016. It's, you know, amazing, these folks meet at least three times a month in regular meetings, they do site visits of all the applications, and the Barnstable Conservation Commission is, if not the busiest, one of the busiest conservation commissions. You know, we have a lot of water, and, you know, we are the, this is the, the body that ensures that the Wetlands Protection Act is enforced in our community. So I just wanted to do a shout-out to not only Dennis, but the entire commission for their dedication to the work. And just one brief note, our short, excuse me, our zoning and regulatory subcommittee met this afternoon before our town council meeting with the goal of perhaps recommending out of our committee the zoning and general ordinances for short-term rental regulations. We will need a little bit more time, and we have, our next meeting will be on April 2nd. So the originally proposed date of bringing this forward is a first reading to the town council on March 19th. Will definitely be postponed into April or May.
Thank you very much. If everyone's all set, we're going to close communications, and we're going to move to the orders of the day. And we're going to start with, with the reading into the record of item number 2020-135, and, no, I didn't do it. Did I do that correctly? Yes, I did that correctly. Okay. And Eric, if you would, I'm sorry, Counselor Steinheber, if you would read that into the record, please. Thank you.
Sure thing. President Paul. This is under Old Business, item 2020-135. Like to open the public hearing. Authorization of a Housing Development Incentive Program Tax Increment Exemption Agreement between the Town of Barnstable and JP Baxter House, LLC, for eight new market-rate residential units located at Zero and Seventeen High School Road in Hyannis, as written.
Okay, we have, we have a first and a second, and this is open for public hearing. Oh, rational first, Aden first, I'm sorry. Thanks, Aden.
Hi, Arden Cadran, Housing Coordinator for the Town of Barnstable. Because this is the, this is the first tax increment exemption agreement that the town council has had before them, I'm going to give you a little summary of the program. So the goal of the Housing Development Incentive Program, program, or the H-DIP, as we call it, is to increase residential growth, expand housing diversity, support economic development, and promote neighborhood stabilization. As a gateway city, Barnstable was eligible to participate in this state program. We were required to designate a zone and then to develop a plan for approval by DHCD. The town chose the same boundary as our growth incentive zone as the boundary for, for our H-DIP. This is because this is where public infrastructure is, this is where there's a lot of public and private development going on, and both of those are criteria of the program, so we're able to meet that criteria with this zone. The town went through, then went through the approval process. We held a public hearing, and town council approved the plan back in March of 2018. It was then submitted to Department of Housing and Community Development, and they approved it as well. With an approved HD plan, this then allows the town council to enter into tax incentive exemption agreements, or ties, that exempt developers of market-rate housing, so again, it's market-rate housing, not, it's not an affordable program, from payment of some portion of municipal real estate taxes which would otherwise be owed. So more specifically, a tie may exempt the owner from anywhere between 10% to 100% of just the increased value of the property after development, no exemption on the existing value, for a period of from five to 20 years. These terms are negotiated between the developer and the town as part of the agreement, as part of the tie agreement. So approval of a local tax exemption then also allows the developer to proceed to the state for state tax credits, but a local tie is a necessary criteria for eligibility for those tax credits. When this plan was first... When this plan was first approved, the Tax Incentive Subcommittee of the Town Council worked with staff to develop a process for applications and an evaluation criteria for those applications. So tonight before you, we have a request for eight new market-rate residential units proposed by developer Jake Dewey, and he is going to present the specifics of his project to you, but I will remain available for any questions you might have related to the program or the tie.
Jake Dewey, I am the developer, I don't like to refer myself as developer, but I am the person creating this project. Let's see, are we, oh, there we go. So just sort of a quick, brief overview of the project. The location is in between Main Street and South Street. The, it's about two houses over from where the Annex Police Station is. You can see it right there. Pretty prime location, close to downtown, close to the waterfront, close to pretty much everything we're pushing in the growth incentive zone. The lot that we're proposing to develop is currently undeveloped. It sat vacant for as long as I can tell, I don't think it's ever been developed. This is sort of the existing. The front building is a historic building built in the early 1900s. I don't know the true history, but Hyannis Main Street Waterfront Historic put a name on it as the JP Baxter House, so that's what I'm going with. That building will stay in place, it's currently two residential units and one commercial space. This is a proposed plan. It's going to be four duplex structures set in the back of the lot. This is in HVB District, so this is completely by right. We did not have to go for any zoning relief or any relief, the only discretionary board we had to go in front of was the Hyannis Main Street Waterfront Historic. This is what the structures are going to look like, pretty basic, straightforward townhouse. I'm trying to keep this at an attainable market rate, I don't want this to be, you know, a luxury housing, it's definitely a sort of straightforward townhouse with simple finishes, easy for people to move in and out of, easy for me to turn over when there's damage and things of that nature. So the goals of the project, create eight new market-rate rental housing units in the downtown area. I've been asked a lot, you know, why aren't we putting more units in here? My sort of goal here was to keep the density to a reasonable level in line with what I believe is density done in a manner that's cohesive with the Cape Cod character and that also won't stand out in the Main Street Waterfront Historic District. Arden sort of gave a brief overview of what I can ask for and the range of what's available. I came up with what I think is sort of a middle-of-the-road request here, we're asking for an 80% exemption for the first five years and a 50% exemption for years six to 10. I did, did seek support from different people in town, the committee did vote unanimously to approve this and push it forward to where we are now. I met with the Housing Committee, HAC, Barnstable Housing Authority, and the bid, and everyone was very strongly in support of it. Timeline, we started this tie process in October and here we are, we are set to hopefully get it approved tonight and close the loan tomorrow and begin construction as soon as we get state approval from what you guys approve. Any questions?
Any Counselors' questions? Counsel, oh, we have, okay. Is anyone to speak from the public? Seeing no one, we're going to close public comment on this and motion to close?
[inaudible]
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, okay, Counselor Snet, thank you.
Number of, are they one-bedroom, two-bedroom units?
Two-bedroom, one and a half-bath townhouses.
Okay, thank you.
With laundry inside.
And I think I saw something here, do you have an estimated rent that you're?
We propose 1,700.
For two, okay.
Yeah.
Counselor Cullum, please.
Yes, can you assign a number to the 80% and the 50%?
I will defer to Mark Millen for--
What does that look like? Thank you.
I mean--
The total is in the rationale, so the total amount is $98,000, $98,279.
Oh, I see here, I'm sorry, I missed it.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't have it broken out by--
And that's over the 10 years.
That's over the 10 years, exactly.
Counselor Beedenbender, please.
Thank you, President Hebert. I just want to say that I sat on the committee and we saw the numbers, we saw what Jake's margins were, and he is not making hand over fist. This is, it was an eye-opening experience for me to look at the actual numbers that a developer is trying to work with and we've got someone who's trying to help us address, I mean, of course, there's something in it for him, but he is doing something that we need in this community and that's building housing. And if you look at the numbers, without this help, I don't know that he could really pull it off, it's really kind of critical to make it work for him. So I 100% support this and I hope you will too.
Thank you. Any other Counselors' questions?
Second.
First, we have a second. All those in favor of moving the question?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, that's unanimous. Madam Clerk, this is a roll call, please.
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rapkarseti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levec?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Snet?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Steinheber?
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Congratulations, yeah. Thank you.
Start on Saturday?
Okay, so now we're going to move on to new business, but before we do that, we're going to have Mr. Mark Els and, Town Manager Els, and also Mr. Mark Millen will, Finance Director, is going to give us a overview of the 2021 capital improvement.
Good evening, Mark Els, Town Manager. We are pleased to submit to you our FY 2021 Capital Improvement Program. This is a recommendation for projects totaling $39 million. Our schools, our airport, our general government, both general-funded and enterprise-funded. We, Mark Millen will go through a little bit of the background on how we come to the recommended capital improvement plan. There are, there's certainly the scoring aspect where I want to thank Mark and Nathan for doing the, you know, the hands-on work in preparing this and getting it to the point for submission. Our senior staff for their involvement in reviewing and participating, and our Director of Public Works and his staff for playing a key role in bringing forward a majority of these projects. There's a tremendous amount of thought, not only into what Mark will describe, but looking at what we have in the queue. We have an aggressive five-year CIP ahead of us and we have, you know, portions of prior CIP. So one of my big questions is, what do we need to do? How are we maintaining what we have? What are we being regulated to achieve? And where are we in the backlog of projects that we're trying to move forward that are currently on the books? So when we bring forward projects, though, in sometimes others may rank higher than what you may see in a proposed, in any given year, many times there are still decisions to be made relevant to those projects. So we will make decisions to bring forward others. You know, many times there's already been designs done and so therefore we will move forward with the construction aspect. Many times there are matching funds available, so we will look down the list and make sure that where those opportunities present themselves, we take that into consideration as we bring forward our annual capital improvement program. So thank you. I do recommend this plan, and I'll turn it over to Mark to do a review.
Thank you. Good evening, Counselors. Mark Millen, Director of Finance. So the significant governing policies that require us to file an annual capital plan are outlined in our charter and our Town Manager Regulations mainly. The charter requires an annual five-year plan to be submitted by, recommended by the Town Manager 30 days prior to the operating budget, and it must be acted upon by the council before the first day of the last month of the fiscal year. So by the end of May, we need to act upon the recommendations. Included in the Town Manager's Regulations are the required CIP task force that we must establish to evaluate the projects, the criteria that we use to evaluate the projects. In any project less than $50,000, we will typically be considered as part of the operating budget, not the capital budget. In any project equal to or greater than $250,000, we typically finance with a debt issue. The significant components of a capital budget, why do we do this? Well, it's a, these are very large expenditures that could affect the future growth in our community, future operating budgets and service levels, and therefore require a little bit more scrutiny, we have to get it right. Especially we need to understand any operating budget impacts that these things could incur upon us. Since they're large in nature, they don't necessarily recur every year, so we don't want to put them in an operating budget because it's going to skew the operating budget. So we separate them into a capital plan. And many of these decisions will bind future legislative bodies because we'll finance them with bond issues which will lock future tax dollars into debt service payments, and so our budget flexibility is affected by that. And finally, a CIP will, a capital improvement plan will assist our community in helping us define our priorities and aligning our projects with our strategic plan. In Part One of your document that's been submitted to you, we provide you a detailed listing of all projects that have been submitted by departments. We have 159 projects that were submitted over the next five years. We won't get to all 159 of those, we are not staffed, nor can we financially afford those, but it's important for us to know what they are, again, so that we can establish our priorities and address those that are most important to the community within the next five years. So we have a $387 million of submissions, the enterprise funds, across the various enterprise funds we have is about $112 million over the next five years, $170 million in general fund projects, and $105 million in sewer construction and private way improvement fund projects. That's about $100 million more than last year and most of it's in that sewer construction Part Two of your document will provide you detailed information about the scoring processes that we use. We use two processes. We, about three years ago, we established a process where we would have all task force members and department heads come together, and I want to thank the airport for hosting us this year. Where we come together and we review each department's highest priorities. We can't review all 159 projects, it's just not enough time to look at them all, and many of those projects are in outer years. But we try to focus on the projects where departments are requesting funding for the immediate fiscal year and that are of the highest priority for each department. And so we use the, we have all the task force members listen to the presentations, ask questions, it develops a better understanding of the task force members of what each project entails. We didn't have that before, everybody in the past was just sitting at their desk reading submissions and they didn't really have an opportunity to ask questions, so we modified the process about three years ago. And these are the four criteria that we used in that first round of scoring to try to segregate out the ones that are of the highest priorities. Those are that are imperative or essential that we should do in the immediate fiscal year. The second part of the process, scoring process, that just the task force does on their own is outlined in the Town Manager Regulations, and it looks at these 10 critical areas and evaluates each project submission that was part of that first round of scoring against these 10 criteria. And again, that's, more detail is provided in Part Two of the document describing which each one of these 10 criteria the task force is looking at. It's a very large task for each one of these members to read all these project submissions, evaluate them against each one of these 10 criteria, looking at the specific bullets under each criteria to try to come up with an objective assessment. Here's an example of, well, here's a, here's a listing or a table that shows the top 20 scoring projects. We average the rank from the first round of scoring and the second round of scoring to come up with an average rank, and these are ranked from highest to lowest priority based on that average rank. And you can see the lines that are highlighted are the projects that are actually included in the fiscal year 2021 recommended funding list. There's more than just those, but this is all illustrated in Part Two of your Capital Improvement Plan document. In Part Three of your document, we do have a process where we look at all existing capital appropriations, we look at the status of those appropriations, we look, as Town Manager Els mentioned, the existing progress on those projects, and we try to, and we identify the projects that have been completed that have remaining funds available that we can reprogram for new projects. And we've identified these 17 projects, I believe they are, with the original council order appropriation number, how much was left, and what project we're going to redirect the remaining funds to as part of the fiscal year 21 funding plan. It's almost $900,000 of remaining funds from completed projects that we've identified that we can reprogram to other projects. And then in Part Four of your document illustrates a potential five-year funding plan. This is what we, again, as Town Manager Els stated, this is an aggressive funding plan. We're thinking that with some assumptions that we, that are outlined in this part of your document, we could, we could possibly achieve this level of funding. There are some policy decisions that need to be made, but the general fund could support about $80 million in new projects over the next five years, the sewer construction fund, $105 million, and the various enterprise funds, about $112 million, of course, fees that are charged by those enterprise funds will have to be evaluated on an annual basis to see if we can afford to do all of those and maintain reasonable fees. And then in Part Five of your document, we list the detailed descriptions, justification, and funding sources for each one of the recommended 49 projects. There are 49 projects for your consideration, seven for the airport enterprise fund, 24 for the general fund, four for the sewer enterprise fund, et cetera. And various funding sources that we're using to pay for these recommended projects, about $6 million in reserves between the enterprise funds and general fund reserves are being used, about $30 million in requests for new borrowing authorizations, $2.6 million of potential Federal Aviation Administration and Mass Department of Transportation grants for airport-related projects, and that 900,000 of funds remaining from other projects contribute to the resources that are going, that are being used to fund this, finance this $39 million capital program. And then finally, in Part Five of your document, we've also identified a number of projects that we would like to bring forward to the Community Preservation Committee for their consideration first, before we bring them to you, to see if there's an opportunity to provide some funding for these projects from community preservation funds. If we are successful in achieving, you know, some funding from them that could help supplement the cost of this, decreasing the general fund contribution, for example. So we would like to go to the Community Preservation Fund with these projects first before we come back to the council, and we can either do that as part of next year's capital improvement plan or off-cycle sometime during the year after the Community Preservation Committee has provided their recommendation on these projects. And finally, I would just like to, again, thank the town staff for the numerous hours that they put into evaluating these projects, department staff time that is spent identifying the projects, task force members, and our Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee who, you should have received their report today in your mailbox of their review of this capital plan, and I'd like to thank them for their thoughtful comments and review the time they spent reviewing this as well. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Vice President Rapkarseti, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mark and Mark. Not so much a question, but a comment, and also a shout-out to CFAC. That's a committee that's made up of volunteers from the community, and I'm glad to see that, I think, if I read correctly, two of the members participate in the beginning of development of the plan, which I think is a good thing. But I encourage all the council-- But I encourage all the Counselors to look at their report. I think it was sent to us to look at their report. And, I mean, they make some very valid observations of the plan, and, you know, not so much criticisms, but constructive thoughts to it. So, I encourage everyone, before we start voting on the items, to take a look at those recommendations and observations by CFAC. So, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I do want to, for the listening public, I believe we're going to be -- all of these items are listed in a full page practically in the Patriot, possible Patriot coming out tomorrow, if the public wants to look at that. And also, if they go to the town website, the Town Council, all of these items are listed with explanations, so the public can review them.
And our book, too. The whole book is online.
And the entire book on all of this that we have is also online, so the public can take advantage of that. Thank you both. Thank you very much.
Thank you, too.
Okay. Okay, Counselors. I will entertain a motion to refer Town Council orders 2020-082 through 2020-130, as written, to individual public hearings to be held on each order on March 19, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the item as read, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. We thank you very much. With that, that our next regular meeting will be March 19, 2020, and I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
First and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Awesome. Safe travels home. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.